We're making some parks series that are radical.
Yeah.
We can charge them.
I can't hear anything.
They think we're coming from the south.
So they're going out of the country.
Yeah.
They're looking.
Yeah.
And that's where the park is.
Yeah, you don't.
Road light.
We don't have to.
Because here's the thing.
Like, the sewer department guy.
So it was really interesting.
It's a spectacular place.
So I didn't realize how long it was.
And you're like, so office hours are eight to five.
I had a bad time.
Pretty spectacular. Come and copy whatever you want.
I did.
It's on my bucket list if I don't know a ball. Maybe you ever get there.
Well, you just have to make it happen.
For the business.
I think it's starting to be more.
So I want you to like to add what you're paid.
How you got it.
Just like you found when you get up there and the pictures come out of these legs. And just boards.
Give addresses for.
And these rings, like the rings. No, but they see, but they like.
Show you the ring clouds.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Do you have stickers?
Yeah. But. Yes, it's Christ. Okay. I think you're a little jacketed. Oh, absolutely.
You did.
I did, I did, I got rid of it.
All right, good evening. We'll call the common council meeting to order on this snowy night. Welcome, and we'll start with the invocation from Council of Quans.
Father, this evening, as we gather together, let us pause a moment in remembrance of Max Reed. He was truly a civil servant, both in all of his service to our city, as our attorney and on various boards, but also to the school system. And he was a true servant leader in our community, and we mourn with his family at his loss. We hope that we can all take the example of a man like Max and apply it to our own lives as we look forward to serving our community tonight in making good and wise decisions and taking time to listen and hear one another. We ask your blessing on our meeting tonight, upon our deliberations, and upon our hearts as we come to serve the citizens of the City of Warsaw. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Diane. It's a little tongue-in-cheek about a snowy night, but we have guests from Atlanta, and they noticed. I will tell you, they noticed, so. All right. Well, before we get to them, we've got a little business here tonight. In fact, let's start in with the approval of the minutes from the March 21st meeting.
Do you want me to mark Counselor Fresh as president?
You could, if you'd like, unless he shows up.
I will unmark him.
All right. So, back to the minutes. Those were presented, and ask if there's any corrections or edits to the minutes. If not, is there a motion to approve them as presented?
I move that we accept the minutes from the last council meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Thank you. So, we have some honored guests with us tonight whom I'd asked to come up front. Erin, would you like to come up?
You said honor guest, I didn't know.
Want to come around and join you?
Yes, I did.
Where else would I sleep out?
Just as long as you guys are in front of the camera.
Steal this. Come over to front this. All right. So we've got a proclamation tonight, and I will read that, and then we will make the presentation, and ask Erin and our guests to add their context to this, so.
So this is an official proclamation. Whereas April was first declared Child Abuse Prevention Month by presidential proclamation in 1883, and whereas CASA of Casillasco County nonprofit organization committed to speaking in the best interest of children who are at risk for abuse and neglect. CASA recruits, trains, and supports volunteers to serve at-risk children in the family court system. And whereas the Indiana Department of Child Services received 231,091 reports of child abuse and neglect statewide in 2021. And whereas in 2021, CASA of Casillasco supported 68 volunteers who donated 4,202 hours of their time advocating for the 164 abused and neglected children, and 34 with safety issues being pursued in family law cases, all in Casillasco County. And whereas child abuse and neglect can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas it is imperative that we acquire a working knowledge of the phenomenon of child abuse and neglect, and that we demonstrate support for work of both professionals and volunteers involved in providing child protection, rehabilitation, and prevention services. Now, therefore, to be resolved, I, Joseph M. Tomer, Mayor of the City of Warsaw, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Our city officials urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children in the families of Casillasco County.
So. Proclamation. Erin, I know CASA advocates for kids all the time, and no one better than you and your group here to talk a little bit about it and just give us a little bit of insight into your mission.
Sure, thank you. Well, thank you. I'm Erin Rowland-Jones. I'm the executive director of CASA of Casillasco County. I also have with me two board members, Angie Ritchie and Heather Reichenbach. CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate. So we are appointed to court cases where there are allegations of abuse and neglect, and we get the worst of the worst cases, those that do go before the judge. I would say 85% of the cases we see are mostly neglect. There's still a huge drug abuse issue in the community, and we see a lot of children coming into the system due to neglect within their household because of drug use. Unfortunately, we still do see a lot of abuse as well, physical abuse, sexual abuse, and this is happening all over Casillasco County, all over the state, and all over the nation. We did want to come here today and appreciate the city supporting us. April is National Child Abuse Awareness Month. There are several opportunities we're having in the community just to bring awareness. We've been at some other city councils to just bring awareness to this chronic issue. We have a few events coming up. We changed our pinwheel garden planting to this Thursday. It's at the Courthouse Square at noon. Everyone is welcome. You may want to say, why are you planting pinwheels? Blue pinwheels are the national symbol for child abuse prevention. They represent the whimsy of happy, safe childhoods that we would like all children to be able to have. So we plant a garden of pinwheels every year. We have Clearwater Car Wash generously doing a give-back day for us on Wednesday. May be a little rainy, but that doesn't matter. Wash could still be okay. And then next Tuesday, I believe, the 26th, Casiana is doing a give-back day. We'll be getting some of those funds. CASA is a nonprofit organization. All the money that we utilize to recruit, train, and support our volunteers, we get either through grants or through fundraising. So we appreciate all of the support, and just wanted to, again, raise awareness of this issue of child abuse and neglect that we unfortunately see on a daily basis. I don't know if Angie or Heather have anything they'd want to add, but we do have a board of 17 community volunteers that assist us with governance as well, and we really appreciate them also.
If you want to know more.
Yes.
CASACHildren.com. And sometimes people think that child abuse isn't fun to talk about, but there are things that we can do to help alleviate or support families, and that's definitely a service that CASA provides, and it's an honor to be here to represent.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
We have a training coming out.
We do. We have a training starting June, oh, gosh, I believe June 7th is our next training. It's going to be three days a week for three weeks. We're going to crank it out really fast. There's 33 hours of training that our volunteers go through in order to then do the advocacy work we ask them to do. We will have another training session starting in September. So again, you can go to our website, CASACHildren.com, if you have any questions or want to look more into training and what we do on a day-to-day basis. And I know Diane is actually on child protective team along with me, so she gets to hear some of the really horrible things that we unfortunately have to deal with in the community, so, thank you.
And this is our 30th year.
Thank you. See ya. So I bring them along. This is our 30th year of advocacy. We started in 1992, so we just keep plugging along. Hopefully, one day, maybe we'll work ourselves out of a job, but until then, we're here to advocate for the kids, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. 30 years says a lot about the group, and again, we appreciate all you've done. And again, I know the work is not easy, but you provide a tremendous service to the community, and I know our council is very much appreciative of this city, so thank you. Lynn, any comments on the March fund report that was presented in your packet?
No, I don't really have anything to say unless someone has any questions.
All right. All right. Got a pretty full agenda tonight with no unfinished business. Let's move into new business. First thing I'll do is ask for your approval of a conflict of interest state by Ryan Workman. Ryan is our MS4 coordinator, and he's acknowledged in this annual statement his conflicts. Questions? Is there a motion to accept the conflict of interest statement as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Passes six to zero. Thank you. Item number two is Resolution 20220402. This is an amendment to the ARP funding plan. I think we talked about, the Department of Treasury and their final rule gave all units of government a $10 million cap limit on revenue replacement, and Clerk Treasurer Lynn Christiansen thought it was a good idea to memorialize that into our plan. So as we execute our plan, we've acknowledged that those funds will all be from that bucket, if you will. Lynn, any additions to that? Questions?
It's basically a formality. If you remember right, we had Baker Tilly figure our amount, and it was very close to our $3.4 million. We had like $3.1 million, and we probably would have exceeded it checking the next year as well. But as it turned out, we didn't need to do that calculation because, again, the Department of Treasury gave everybody a $10 million cap, so. All right. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 20220402?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20220402.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Thanks, Cindy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Thank you. Passes six to zero, of course. Item number three is Ordinance 20220501. This is an additional appropriation, but essentially what happened, this was an additional appropriation that was approved last year, and unfortunately, the funds didn't get transferred to where they were going. So we have to redo the additional appropriation, because the additional appropriation expires at the end of the year if you don't carry the money forward or get it where it belongs. And that did not happen. So it's, again, a little bit of a cleanup. Lynn, any comments on that?
Uh, no.
Excuse me.
Basically, that's the second to what happened. This is just the first reading. The public hearing will be at our next meeting, the advertised public hearing will be at our next meeting.
And this money was supposed to go from the Edit Fund to the revolving loan fund. So, again, we just have a five-year commitment with that, and we were able to pay it out last year from funds in Edit, or in that revolving loan fund, but we need to secure the entire amount for the full five-year pledge. So that's what happened.
Questions?
Yeah, so this is first reading, that's why I'm seeing May 2nd on it?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move to approve Ordinance 20220501 on first reading.
All second. Thanks, Jeff. All right. Thanks, Josh. Any further discussion or questions? And again, you'll see this next week, or excuse me, next council meeting, sorry. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Again, pass six to zero. Item number four, this is Ordinance 20220401. This is not a public hearing. That public hearing was held at the Plan Commission level.
Correct.
So this is, again, a hearing for, is this second reading?
So, PUDs are a little.
First reading.
Different. This is the first reading, but it only takes one from council if you guys defer back to
Plan Commission, so.
Yeah, you remember, we've done a few of these, and the ideas will be asked to decide whether or not to keep it for the secondary review here at the council level or send it back to Plan Commission, as we've done, I think, the past two or three of these PUDs that we've done. So go ahead, if you want, and present.
So before you today, we have the PUD ordinance for the Bel Augusta North subdivision, so this will be the fifth phase of this subdivision that they've been building. The planning department's been, we've been, as a community, we've been working hard to fill that housing gap that we've seen, so these PUDs are kind of a result of that, giving the, it was built into our ordinance to allow developers to adjust to the market and allow the city as well to adjust to the market. So it kind of helps the developer drive a variety of housing types when they're building these developments. So this one's no different than some of the other ones you've seen. However, this PUD would just focus on the varying in lot sizes. There won't be any zero-lot line attached, single-family homes in this development. They'll all be detached, they'll all be single-family, but it's just a variety of lot sizes. So they're planning to do 89 lots on 33 acres. So this is, again, a continuation of that Bel Augusta development that's been going in on 225 North. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. And again, tonight, we request that the council take one of the following three actions. Option one would be to approve the ordinance in general terms and retain that secondary detail review. Option number two would be to approve the ordinance and delegate that secondary reading to the Plan Commission. And option number three would be to either request for more information or deny the request. So with that, I would just like to, again, open it up to any questions that you have.
So I know we have two council members who are members of the Plan Commission, have gone through this, the original, the first hearing, and would ask if you have any comments, Diane or Jeff?
Well, the Plan Commission approved it unanimously. At the public hearing, we had people that were in the already-developed portion there that just had questions about what was going on, but there was no objection to anything that was there. They have provided for green space, which is up in the kind of top left-hand corner of what you're looking at under Block G. There's a section along there where they're going to have a pavilion and a recreation space. You can kind of see it at the end of that little cul-de-sac there, so they have provided for that. Many of these lots do meet our existing R1, but because of the curves and things, the way they were configured, and some of them are pie-shaped, so they technically wouldn't meet it at one point in the lot, but at other points in the lot, they do meet on the overall size. So the homes will, again, be built by the same developers, so they'll continue on in the same manner as the development, so there wasn't any concern with the people that were at the public hearing about any of that, really just questions for information.
Well, well said by Diane. I would recommend, again, these are becoming more common, so they can have a mixed use, and it just helps the developer and also meets, I think, the demands of citizens, the variety that they can choose from. I would recommend that we, or at least advise the council, that we refer back to Plan Commission, unless Diane disagrees. I just, I think that's good form to allow the Plan Commission to go through the second phase of it. Is that okay?
I agree.
Jeremy, or Justin, I know in the first edition, there was, isn't there some duplexes in there?
So, yeah, those are attached, single-family houses, so each lot is owned independently. It's a little different. Duplexes where it would have a single ownership, but these would be independently owned.
Are there any in the second?
No, there would not be any in this phase five. It would have, everything would be detached.
All right. Thank you.
And they shared that their market analysis showed that there was a greater need for that detached on a smaller lot at this time.
And the most dense portion is on the south side, so it's close to the exit, the egress from the subdivision, so they kind of worked that into the design as well.
So the PUD helps with these odd lot shapes?
Correct.
Okay. Makes perfect sense.
Yeah, it's the same question. I was like, so why are we doing this?
Right. Got it. Questions?
Well, in an effort to stay consistent with what we've done before and taking Councilman Gross's recommendation, I would move to approve option number, I think it would be number two, approve in general terms and then delegate secondary review to the Plan Commission.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Is this a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing was held.
The public hearing was held with the Plan Commission. I mentioned that earlier.
It did.
Okay. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Thank you. Lynn, that was a good question, because I know the PUDs we've done before, there's been a little bit of questioning as to when the PUD public hearing occurs, and we finally worked through it after about three or four of these. We've got it down, so.
It was on the.
Yeah, it was on, and I had the girls take it off, because I didn't want any confusion. All right. Great. All right. Jeremy's going to come up and present a very small annexation that is being requested by the Bowen Center. Bowen Center has a residential facility that's just adjacent to, but outside of the city limits, and they're wanting city utilities. And there'll be two parts to this discussion tonight. The first is item number five, which Jeremy will go through the fiscal plan. This is a resolution that requires just one vote, and then we will go into a public hearing for the ordinance, the annexation ordinance, which will be the first hearing. Again, it'll be a public hearing. We'll do that, and then this will be, if it's approved, it'll be considered on second reading, I assume, at the next meeting. So, Jeremy?
Yeah, so there's not a whole lot to this annexation, obviously, being a single lot, already occupied lot with a single-family home on it that Bowen Center has purchased and wishes to obtain sanitary sewer. So the fiscal plan just goes through the various impacts to the city. Because the road, we're not really taking in a lot of roads, there's not much additional maintenance to the road. You'll see the difference in any kind of fire, police, or street maintenance is literally negligible, because it's literally one lot right adjacent to the existing street that we already maintain. The street's already built to our standard, because we own half of the street, and the other half is not in the city limits. So in terms of the fiscal plan, there's very little impact to the city itself. You'll see the taxing impact under the fiscal impact. There will be some impact to the county, the school, and the library, but also those are very negligible, given the size of the property. I think the highest would be the school, which would be like $132 a year in terms of taxes that may be lost based on the assessed valuation. So what you would have to do is approve this fiscal plan for the resolution, or approve the resolution for the fiscal plan, after which you could hold the public hearing for the ordinance, which is also after this, you hold the first reading. This will come back to you in May. I don't see any reason not to annex this property in. They can have access to sanitary sewer. They will have to install the sanitary sewer, but the manholes adjacent to this property.
So again, right now, you're considering Resolution 20220404, and that's the approval of the fiscal plan? Are there questions? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to take action on Resolution 20220404?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. So Resolution 20220404 passes six to zero. The fiscal plan is approved. Now we will move on to item number six, which is Ordinance 20220402, which is a public hearing. It is the first reading of the annexation of 1813 Heppler Drive. Jeremy, any further instructions?
That it meets the requirements needed, 100% voluntary annexation, so there's no issues with those requirements. So you just open up to the public hearing, and then you can vote on it after that.
All right. Any questions before I open the public hearing? All right. Hearing none. I will open the public, the hearing, and ask if there's, first of all, anyone wishing to speak on behalf of Ordinance 20220402. In other words, in favor of the annexation of the lot? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the annexation presented in Ordinance All right. Hearing none. I will turn it back to the council for their final thoughts and vote.
Since we have approved the fiscal plan and everything appears to be in order, I would make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2022-04-02. I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Any final questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Again, pass six to zero. All right. Let's move on to item number seven. This is Resolution 20220403, asking for the approval of the development agreement with Sullivan Wickley. So John Murphy and Reed Mason from Sullivan Wickley are owners and developers of the marketplace of Warsaw Shopping Center. They purchased the shopping center with the goal of resurrecting the retail use of that space instead of the building falling into disrepair. Tonight, we will hear a presentation from the developers, followed by Barnes and Thornburg Bond Counsel Randy Rumpala, and financial consultant Andrew Mosser from Baker Tilly, followed by our Community and Economic Development Director Jeremy Skinner. Last Monday, at the Redevelopment Commission, approval was given to enter into the development agreement with the City Redevelopment Commission and Sullivan Wickley. This is the same agreement that we are considering tonight. Two of the RDC board members, Councilman Gross and Clandares, were among those who gave favorable recommendations with their votes, and will certainly give comment tonight as well. The developers asking the city is to allow the tax increment created by their investment into the improvements of the shopping center to be used to finance the project. The city is also being asked to back the TIF bond payments from years five to 10 of the 20-year bond. So again, just remembering that the TIF increment that's created is not any existing tax dollars, it's just new tax dollars created by their investment into the project. So I will begin with Sullivan Wickley. And Reed, are you going to present, or?
I'll go first.
All right. Great. Let me pull that up.
So what we thought we would do is first talk about who Sullivan Wickley is, what we do. we do, then talk about the project today, its current state, then talk about the vision to help heal the project, and then end by detailing the benefits of the project to the city. So Mr. Mayor, if you can go to the two pages in. So we're based in Atlanta. We were here last week. It was much warmer last week than it is here today. But we're a real estate firm, about 30 people. All we do is retail. So we acquire shopping centers, we develop shopping centers, we lease about 3 million square feet of space, we manage assets, we have an investment sales group. So everything we do is retail, shopping centers. And if you go to the next page. And we do that in the southeast and in the Midwest. So we have interest in two properties here in Indiana, one in Terre Haute, one in Indianapolis. If you go a couple more. So the vast majority of people in this room know the shopping center. You've either shopped there, driven past it. It was built in 1986. It's 190,000 square feet. It was previously owned by a group out of New York City, and they had the great misfortune of having retail tenants in the shopping center that had not reinvented themselves. So they didn't adapt to e-commerce. They didn't change the business plan. So Sears, JCPenney, Carson's, Pier One, all the shop, all those tenants had their problems of them of their own. They filed for bankruptcy. When that happened, the group out of New York, they couldn't service the debt. They gave the property back. A special servicer in Miami, Florida, Rialto, took custodianship of the asset, and it kind of floundered for a couple of years. We bought it October 20th last year because we realized that the city of Warsaw has a phenomenal, stable employment base. The property itself, if you go a couple, you know, the property itself has really good votes. It's got great visibility from the interstate. It has the right-sized boxes, which I don't want to steal my colleague's thunder of Reed. It just happened to have, to the perfect storm, you know, the misfortune of retailers that did not adapt to changing times. If you, a couple more pages. So the property's 14% occupied today. You know, there's a couple of tenants hanging on. They like being there. They would like to see additional tenants move in, which we have a plan to take what the current state is today. You know, that's Pier One. And Reed and I sat in that, or we were standing in that space today. The roof is leaking because it snowed this morning. Anytime it leaks, you go to the next page, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, that's actually, that ballast roof is on top of Pier One. You know, so when you, when it leaks inside, you have mold, drywall damage, so forth. There's a number of HVAC units on top of the, you know, the roof. The vast majority of those heating and cooling units are either dated, have to be replaced, or they hadn't been turned on in years. When you don't use them, they fall into disrepair. So what we'd like to do, and what we will do, is take the property in its current form today and very soon transform it into something similar to what this picture is. We bought the property October 20th. We pulled the permit to start construction last week. We signed a construction, or we closed a construction loan with Pinnacle Bank in Nashville, Tennessee, last week, and we started demo today. So things will happen, but we will need the TIF for reasons we'll talk about at the end, mostly because of construction costs. But before we get to that, I'll turn it over to Reed to talk about the plan for the property.
Yeah, I'm Reed Mason. I'm Executive Vice President of Real Estate. I handle the leasing of the property. Our team does. Mr. Skinner, if we could get to, I guess if you go to, you started that page right there, right there. So as John mentioned, it's a great property. Unfortunately, through bankruptcies and tenants leaving, the shopping center is now 14% occupied. The great thing about this property is it's well-positioned on 30, and the spaces are all very good square footages for tenants that are expanding today. So currently, we have 14% occupancy, about 140,000, 150,000 square feet of vacancy. We've got a blank canvas. We're excited about what we're about to do to the property to bring it back to its original form. Mr. Mayor, if you could go to the tenant page. So we started marketing this property, keep going. There we go. We started marketing this property in October, or maybe just before, when we were about to purchase, and it had tremendous amount of interest and success thus far in our lease-up. If you look at, yeah, that's a good page right there. Go back, Mr. Mayor. Nope. There we go. So our first deal that we were able to execute was Planet Fitness. Planet Fitness was signed, and they're coming, and they're opening July of 2022. Planet Fitness is a phenomenal operator. They have over 2,000 locations, and they've never closed a location. We're very grateful for Planet because Planet was the first group to jump in. Like I said, we had a shopping center that was 14% occupied, and it took a leap of faith for them to believe that we're going to do what we said we're going to do, which is redevelop the property. So Planet was our first user that we were able to secure. The second user we were able to secure is Big Lots. They're occupying 30,450 square feet. They're coming, they're, they're opening October of 2022. We have a lease with a national retailer for 50,000 square feet where Carson's previously was, and they are, we're in, you cannot say here they are just yet because we're under confidentiality through our negotiations, but I think it's a tenant that the residents here will, will want, will like, and will feel a void that we currently don't have. And their projected opening is also fall of 2022. We're at LOI with a national retailer for this entire corner right here, which is 40,344 square feet. And again, it's another great retailer that y'all will be, that Warsaw will be very happy to have. Mr. Mayor? So Big Lots, I know most of y'all are familiar with who Big Lots was. I'm not sure if y'all know who Big Lots is today. Big Lots is essentially now a furniture store. Big Lots purchased Roy Hill in 2019, which now means that they can exclusively sell all the Roy Hill merchandise. So you're going to find sofas, chairs, couches, sectionals from $500 up to $2,000. So very good merchandise at an affordable price point. They have a very well-balanced merchandise mix from home decor, like I said, a furniture, small bit of apparel, and some food. Big Lots will have, this will be a turnkey deal, be a very nice new store with a very nice prominent facade as seen on this slide. So here's their merchandise mix. So you have, so here's some pictures of their interior. If you want to scroll through. So very nice store, very heavy on furniture and home decor. The next tenant is Planet Fitness. Like I said, they have over 2,000 locations, very strong operator, have never closed a location. We're very excited about them. And Mr. Mayor, if you want to continue to scroll, we've provided some pictures of what they're inside of their store will look like. Very nice interior, big investment going into this space, high-end equipment, one of the things separates. Planet Fitness is their Black Card. They have, if you want to continue scrolling through, a Black Card Spa. So they have hydro massage rooms, tanning beds. It's a very nice, high-end gem.
All right. So from a construction cost standpoint, everyone in this room knows what's going on today with inflation, prices, et cetera. You know, since COVID, the past 18 months, construction costs have basically increased, depending upon category, 50% to 80%. You know, if you go to the, to the next slide, you know, this is just steel. You know, steel prices have dramatically increased. And unfortunately, what's going on overseas with Russia and Ukraine is just going to make this worse because those two countries supply about 50% of the iron ore for Europe. So the Europeans are going to look elsewhere, which competes. You know, and so it's very, very, very important that the TIF be approved because it helps absorb the construction cost increases that we've experienced over the past 18 months. So what we're asking the council to do, really it's two choices, and this is a graphic we prepared for the mayor and Mr. Skinner back in August of 2021. Really, there's two choices. One, we can do something with the project to save it. And when you have 190,000 square foot shopping center sitting there, not occupied, it's a blight. There's crime, and it deteriorates because it's not heated, it's not cooled, the roof leaks. And once that property reaches a point, there's a point of no return. We caught this shopping center before, it's only been a receivership for a couple of years. So with the TIF, our goal is to revitalize it, which will create jobs, it will increase the property tax base, it will remove the blight, and it's going to provide tenants that are not in this market today. So people don't have to drive to South Bend, or Fort Wayne, or Indianapolis, or, you know, Kokomo, or whatnot. Or the alternative is, either the project doesn't happen, or we, you know, reengineer it, which means it doesn't look as good, or we can't do what we want to do. We purchased it based upon the preliminary feedback of the mayor and other people at the city, based upon gut faith. So we're asking, if you get another slide. Oh, here's one thing. I want to make it clear to the council, but also all the citizens of Warsaw, that approving this does not impact the general fund of the city. It doesn't impact individual property taxes for the citizens of Warsaw. Your home taxes will not, your personal home taxes will not go up. That box in yellow is the project. The marketplace allocation area, which was designated a few weeks back, only the incremental property taxes generated within that box will service these bonds. Nothing outside that box. So none, none of the areas in blue, someone's individual house on the lake, just the box. So if the project happens, it's self, if you go to the next slide, it's self-funding. If the project doesn't happen, it never happened. So I just want to make that clear because we were here last week, and then some people on social media were, if property taxes will go up, that's not, that's not correct. If you go to the next slide. So the benefits to the city will create jobs. It's going to attract new tenants that are not in this market. It, the TIF helps the project overcome the construction cost increases. You know, we will improve the welfare of the city because we will remove the blight. And when we, when we were here in August, the first time we saw the property, the parking lot lights did not work. It was pitch black. They, they work now, but we will be replacing all the lights with LED lights, so they're really going to work. This project achieves all of these goals, but the ultimate purpose of the TIF under the code is to remove light. And this will do that, and it will enhance the quality of life of people in this town. So we respectfully ask approval. And then this last slide, Reed, you like doing this stuff, the feedback.
No, yeah, no. We've had tremendous feedback thus far on the tenants that we announced, that we were able to announce the following tenants, hopefully in the next few months. We're just not there just yet. But again, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've had a phenomenal experience working with the city, working with the mayor, working with Mr. Skinner. Y'all done a great job of establishing a very good team across the board. Everybody's phenomenal professionals, and it's really been a pleasure to work with y'all. So we really appreciate it.
All right. Great. Thank you. So this is your chance to ask questions of the developers directly, and then we'll move on and talk with our, our legal and financial consultants about the process. But if you have questions about the project itself, now, now is appropriate time to ask those questions. I, I think Jeff and Mike, it might be good for you all to make comments because you've sat through the presentation and heard other questions, if you had any items you'd like to share during this question period.
We're about to hear, like we have before, some very creative, not only from the private sector, but people representing us on the public side, creative financing to assist in this type of development. And the reality is probably very, very unlikely that activity would happen in this area unless you have this private, huge investment, private investment with public support. Mike, anything else?
Well, I, I would just say that this is just another example of public-private partnership that this council has been. We have a history of supporting these projects, and it just, it benefits everybody, the city, the people who live here. And it came, it's coming to this council from the redevelopment corporation unanimously. We all, we asked a lot of questions at our meeting last Monday, and it's really nothing but good. And, and I, I think it's really worth emphasizing again that property taxes are not going to be affected by this project. It's a, a simple way to say it, it's a self-sustaining project. And I'm, I'm glad it's going to happen. It's going to benefit everybody.
Questions from the council for the development team?
Is all the development going to be revitalizing existing buildings? Is there any new construction planned in the area?
So our, our goal is to invest money in the inside and the outside. So the outside, which would be the facade, painting, the parking lot, lighting. So the lights that did not work last year, you know, they didn't work on October 19th. They worked on October 21st, but it's the old incandescent lights. We'll be, we'll be replacing that with brand new LEDs. So there'll be work on the exterior roof, HVAC, parking lot, because the parking lot has a bad shape. If you go where the old Dunn's was, be careful because your car will, your alignment will be shot. And then on the interior of the space, we'll be basically gutting everything to, to build things out. But we will not be building new square footage.
Okay.
But the center will look a lot better, hopefully by the holidays.
All right. And if questions come up, we'll defer back. So I'd ask Randy to come up, from, Randy Rumpala from Barnes and Thornburg. Randy's going to talk about, first of all, this resolution. Remember, there's two parts to this tonight. The first part is a resolution, and I'll, I'll have him go through that. And then the second part would be the authorization not to issue revenue bonds. So Randy, I'll let you fill in the details here.
Sure. So the resolution that's before you is to approve the form of the development agreement and authorize its signature. And as was mentioned, the Redevelopment Commission did approve it at its meeting last week. The development agreements between the city, the commission, and the developer, in the agreement, the city would be agreeing, agreeing to issue not to exceed, or approximately $1,711,000 of economic development revenue bonds. Of that amount, about $1.4 million would be provided to the company. The balance of that 1.7 would be used to pay capitalized interest, and Andy Mauser from Baker Tilly can speak more about that. But there's a period of time when there wouldn't be increment, but yet there would be debt service due on the bonds. And then the balance of that would be used to pay costs of issuance of the bonds. The bonds are expected to be purchased by Lake City Bank, and there is an expected interest rate of 5.55%. I keep saying 5.50, but Andy keeps correcting me. It's 5.55%. And as was mentioned numerous times, and I'm going to say it again, the bonds are not an obligation of the city. They are payable solely from the TIF revenues, and we'll talk a little bit about what are the TIF revenues. The primary TIF revenue is the marketplace allocation area. And as was mentioned, that was separately established by the Redevelopment Commission in, over the last few months. And that came before the council as well, a few months ago, to approve of that separate designation. So there's the Winona interurban area, and from that, we carved out the marketplace site itself as its own separate allocation area. So as was mentioned, any incremental increases in assessed value would be captured as increment. That is the primary expected source of payment, and Andy can speak to this, but that's how the bonds have been structured, based on those expected amounts of increment that would be generated. would be generated by the project. The bonds, there is a backup mechanism, and the development agreement goes through that. If you look through the development agreement, you may have seen a city or commission backstop and a developer backstop. One of the requirements of the bank was of the 20-year financing, that the first 10 years be backed up in some fashion. And so the developer agreed to back years one through five with its own revenues, so that in the event the TIF were never sufficient, the developer would make up the difference in the first five years. In the second five years of that 10-year period, the redevelopment commission would pledge incremental revenues from the consolidated northern economic development area to pay debt service in the event the marketplace revenues were short. So again, in the first instance, it's the marketplace revenues, and only in that limited five-year period would the commission look at using the consolidated northern economic development area increment. But the bonds are structured with coverage, so that should never be needed, and I'll let Andy speak more about that. The development agreement provides also that the bond proceeds will be dispersed to the developer. So at closing, which is expected later in May, assuming you adopt the ordinance in May, all of the revenues would be deposited, the bond proceeds would be deposited, the 1.4 would be deposited into an escrow account. They would only be dispersed upon the developer producing signed lease agreements, and there's percentages of how those would be dispersed, and that's laid out in the development agreement. In the development agreement also, the developer is agreeing to waive tax appeals with respect to the marketplace project. There had been discussions, I keep deferring to Andy, but there had been discussions with the assessor as far as the assessments, and that's what the TIF is projected and based upon are those expect, expected assessed values. So that's, that is laid out in the development agreement as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the development agreement itself. Mayor, should I speak to the ordinance now or come back?
I, I would say go ahead and speak to the ordinance as well.
Sure, yeah. So in front of you also, as part of the schedule, the city would be the actual issuer of these bonds. They're economic development revenue bonds. They're issued under Indiana Code 36712. The Economic Development Commission has a role here as well, and they are scheduled to meet tomorrow to approve of the financing and recommend to the council the adoption of the ordinance. The EDC is required by statute to have a public hearing, so that public hearing will happen tomorrow. There's, tech, under the statute, there's not a public hearing before the council, it's before the EDC. That's just a vagary of the statute. But the ordinance is a parameters ordinance, so I mentioned the expected principal amount being 1.7, $1,711,000. The ordinance sets the maximum at $1,009,000. It also sets the maximum interest rate at 7%. Again, those are just parameters, so that we have some wiggle room between now and closing in the event something changes. The ordinance itself also approves forms of documents that would make up the security for the bonds, if you will, the trust indenture and the financing agreement. The financing agreement lays out the expectations of the developer with respect to the TIF. The trust indenture is with a bond trustee, and the TIF revenues would be paid over to the bond trustee and then paid to the bondholder of the bank. But the ordinance, again, would be up only for first reading tonight. We would come back, assuming you pass it on first reading, we would come back in May for approval and adoption of the ordinance, and then we would expect to close on the financing shortly thereafter. So with that, if no questions, I'll turn it over to Andy.
Questions?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Andy Mouser with Baker Tilly. Just wanted to highlight a few things that, you know, I know has been discussed here this evening. You know, these are taxable economic development revenue bonds. For those of you familiar faces who have been on the council in the past, as we've done, the Buffalo Street project, the infrastructure out by the airport, those were redevelopment district bonds, redevelopment authority bonds, where we were financing public infrastructure, and in those cases, there was a property tax backup on those bonds. These bonds are unique. As has been stated here today, the only, only security pledged to the bonds from the city's perspective is the project-specific TIF, so that really lessens the risk, you know, if the TIF were ever insufficient. Really, the only backup being provided additionally besides the project TIF is that five-year city backing, and that would be payable from your existing consolidated northern TIF, which remains very healthy. And that's just a five-year backing from 2029 to 2033, excuse me. Bond payments will be around $150,000 per year, so just to kind of get an idea. But you would never have to pay that full 150 from your existing consolidated TIF unless there was absolutely nothing generated from this project. As you look through the, the ordinance this evening and, you know, here in a couple of weeks, just a couple of items, the parameters, kind of wanted to highlight. One of those, which I think serves as a protection, we'll be approving a bond up to a 25-year term, assuming the project assesses at the level that's anticipated, the intent is to pay these bonds off actually in 20 years. There is that flexibility to extend the repayment to 25 years if the TIF was ever short of projections, but assuming it does perform at that level or above that level, bonds would be fully repaid in 20 years, and then you would have the ability to either end that portion of the TIF area at the 20-year mark rather than going a full 25 years, or you could certainly use that additional five years for other purposes as well. As Randy kind of highlighted, you'd be approving several not-to-exceed amounts, a bond up to 1.9 million. We currently anticipate a bond around 1.7 million, and then a maximum interest rate around 7%. And we currently anticipate that rate right around 5.55%. So that's typical, those of you who may recall previous bond issues, we typically allow those not-to-exceed amounts to be higher, and then when the actual issuance comes in, that gives us flexibility just as, you know, the bond market moves. So as we look forward, you know, we've had, we have had conversations with the assessor's office, the anticipated assessment on the project around 10.2 million. If that assessment comes in lower, like I said, there is that protection to extend the light or the repayment of the bonds through the full 25-year period. If the TIF outperforms and the assessment comes in above that 10.2 million, that, anything above that would be additional TIF for the redevelopment commission for other purposes. And then also, as I mentioned, that, that five-year period after the 20-year repayment of the bond is TIF that's available to the redevelopment commission for other projects, could be passed through the overlapping taxing units, or the, the TIF area could just be ended at that point. So it gives you quite a bit of flexibility. So likewise, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? So again, we're looking at, first part would be the resolution to accept the development agreement, and then the second vote will be with regard to the issuance of the bonds. And I know Randy and Andrew spoke of both of those items tonight. Not to confuse them or overlap them, but they certainly, one, one begets the other, if you will. So Jeremy, I've asked you to come up and, and back clean up and answer any questions. And again, I, I think all of our consultants and the developers are certainly still willing to answer questions as we first now consider Resolution 20220403.
Yeah, certainly that's why they're here, and why I invited them here today, is to answer any questions concerning the bond ordinance or financing that you might have. A few statements that I will make is, one, Sullivan Wickley didn't get the cart before the horse. We had conversations with them and other groups that were bidding on or thinking about bidding on this property out of receivership, and no group came to me and said, we've got a boatload of money that we'd like to dump on your community, and congratulations, you're the winner. They all said, hey, this property has a lot of problems. What is your interest in participating in the redevelopment of this property rather than see it deteriorate further and not be picked up by anybody? So as we had those conversations, not only with Sullivan Wickley, but with other developers, we met with the mayor and some of the redevelopment commission members and said, hey, what's, what's our interest in participating in this project, so that we could give feedback to those bidding on it. All of the prop, all the people that were bidding on it, we did give feedback to and say, we, we're not going to say what capacity the city would be a partner in, but the city would definitely be a partner if the property is purchased moving forward to revitalize it. Obviously Sullivan Wickley was the winning bidder, and we sat down shortly with, after they received that award, and started talking about what this future project that you're looking at now is. So it's not that they purchased the property without some conversations, with, they knew what the risks were, we knew that we were willing to support this, and moving forward, we've come today with a project that we think is in the best interest of the community. On top of that, I know there's some comments about, you know, what the tax impact would be. I can tell you what the impact has been, and that's an increase on everybody's taxes because over the last five years, this property went from a valuation of just under 10 million down to 3.5 million dollars. That money is gone. It doesn't come back, and that impacts everybody's taxes. So regardless if we do nothing, there's already a negative drain on the community's taxes because this property continues to deteriorate. We're looking at a project now that's going to bring this property back into life, not only for this property itself, but the surrounding properties too will see investment from this investment. We've already got projects in Arnold that we're, we're looking at. We've got projects on Gackey that we're looking at, and there's some other interests in other properties. And a lot of that is just from, from what is happening in this area. It's from us putting money in this area. So this project will, will hopefully continue to revitalize this area moving forward. So those are just some of my comments, but certainly if you have any questions, we'll be all willing to, to answer those.
Jeremy, would you also comment? Lake City Bank has been a very important part of this process in, in, in the bond process, and I know the developers have shown appreciation for their involvement. Could you just comment on that? Because that's important to this whole thing.
Yeah, early on, we had a conversation with Sullivan Wickley. They would, they wanted to incorporate Lake City Bank into this project, being a community bank and being a large part of Warsaw. They reached out to them. We sat down shortly after they had obtained the property and started having conversations with Lake City Bank. They've always been hugely in support of, support of this project. So over the next six months, we kind of laid out what it would look like, and all along, they, they kind of helped us get to this point and supported the city on this project and want to see this reinvestment into the city. So they're been a great partner to work with. Obviously, we already know that, they're, they're in our community, but they continue to serve Warsaw very well.
Questions with Jeremy?
Yeah, Jeremy, refresh my memory about the TIF districts. Why they, why we set them up and, and what, and what the benefit is of them?
The, the intent of a TIF district is to revitalize those areas that are underutilized, falling in disrepair, blight, and so forth. So there's different types of TIFs. The northern TIF district is more of an economic development TIF, where we're trying to take an area that's not developing, incentivize it to develop. The Winona interurban's the opposite of that. It's a deteriorated area, a blighted area, and we're attempting to revitalize it or put money back into it. So the intent of the TIF is to take those projects and reinvest them within, that money and reinvest it in that area, i.e. like a TIF bond, what we're talking about tonight. Gackey, and I, I always use this as an example when I meet with the school corporations and other community and taxing agencies. The Winona interurban has not been a successful TIF, right? It is set, and not, from a lack of trying. We certainly have tried over the years, met with numerous developers, tried to push something, tried to create something. It was part of our stellar project, and it's just, it's been a struggle. When they're not successful, they do nothing. When, when they are successful, they revitalize an area, much like the northern TIF district. We've been pushing and pulling on this district for, since I've been here, since 2004, and we continue to do that. I think we're starting to see a culmination of a lot of that work effort we've put into because the Arnold property will start construction this year. The Gackey, we have a development agreement on, and we're, we're hopeful to put all the pieces of that puzzle together to make it work. And then now we have this revitalization of the shopping center. So there's a lot happening in this area. I know there's another property that might have been purchased and hopefully will be redeveloped adjacent to this area. So I think a lot is happening, and that's really what the, the point of the TIF is, to take the money that's generated and reinvest it in that area, specifically this TIF district.
Which is precisely what we're trying to do with this.
Other questions, comments? Gentlemen, do you have anything else to add before we deliberate?
A lot of times, TIFs, from our experience and our careers, have been utilized to spur economic development and ground-up construction. Here, the TIF is for an existing building. That greatly reduces the risk for everybody. And when we approached the mayor and Lake City Bank and Mr. Skinner, we were very strategic and open book and said, you know, here's a structure that works for everybody. Don't give us the money. Put it in escrow account. The key here is unlocking, is signing the leases. Because once you sign the lease with Planet or Big Lots or Tenet B, C, or D, that creates the value. Then the people across the street at the tax assessor's office, which we're meeting with tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock just to update them on the project, they can do their thing. Under the documents we'll sign with the city, we are legally obligated every year to be open book. Here's our rent roll, here's our leases, here's our budget, here's our forecast. It's totally opposite of what you typically do in real estate. You never want to give us people any of that. Let them, let them figure it out, because it's an adversarial sort of arrangement. Here, it's not adversarial, because everyone's interests are aligned to see this project work. So that's what makes this project different, and, you know, we're, we're pleased to be here. I mean, the professionalism of everyone in this room, but also Lake City Bank has been stellar. Lake City Bank, it's the fourth largest bank in the state of Indiana, founded in Warsaw, they're a community bank, they're proving it. So they should be commended, because the TIF is too small to, to be a public issuance, because the transaction costs will be too high. So they are really stepping up to serve the community of the city of Warsaw. So we appreciate your support.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
I might just add two things quickly, and Jeremy said some things that reminded me. One of the things the EDC tomorrow will do is to determine whether or not this project has an adverse competitive effect, and I think I said it before the redevelopment commission, I neglected to say it here. When you look at this area and the rationale for us legally to be able to say that we can use the consolidated northern TIF area TIF in, as a backstop, is because improving this commercial and retail space will generally improve the commercial retail activity in the broader area. And so that's one thought, that you can use the TIF from the consolidated area if you had to because of rising tideless all boats. The second thing is, in terms of tax revenues, redoing this project, the marketplace will create jobs in the city, and jobs in the city will pay local income tax that the city will be a beneficiary of. So just to point that out.
Randy, would you stay up for just a minute? I know, would you just highlight the, the process that we're going through as far as the public process? I know it's been the redevelopment commission tonight. It, it comes here. The EDC is, is not too often used in, in our bond processes, and I, I think it's important that the, the council understand where the EDC, and especially the fact that the public hearing is happening at the EDC level. And then I think you mentioned they will come back here for final approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. I would, I would even go back, when you talk about public approvals and meetings, I would go back to what I said earlier in terms of the designation of the marketplace allocation area. That involved two meetings of the redevelopment commission, the plan commission, the common council, and one of those commission meetings was a public hearing. So it was that process as a precursor to all of this. As Andy mentioned, many of the bonds you have done have been, while they've been supporting development, they were for public infrastructure, so they were more public bonds, they were city bonds. This isn't a city bond per se, it's, it's a bond that's payable from the TIF that'll be generated from the developer. So the ability to use those proceeds, I, it's a dated term, but I'm getting older so I can say it, it's inside the fence versus outside the fence. Outside the fence is that general public infrastructure, roads, sewers, that's those sorts of things. Inside the fence is what we're doing here. We're renovating, allowing these bond proceeds to be used to renovate the private property to generate new assessed value. And so that process is a different statutory scheme, which involves the economic development commission. So it involves the commission pledging the increment from the area they created, the council approving a bond ordinance in two meetings, the economic development commission having a public hearing and a meeting, and that meeting tomorrow, assuming you act tonight and they act tomorrow, they will adopt a resolution recommending that you on May 2nd adopt the bond ordinance. And so that's that economic development component that requires the EDC be involved in the process.
Goodness, said it better. Thank you.
The one thing I'll say though is, is I don't, the word scheme, I'd rather say creative instead of scheme. People around here don't like government and scheming. But it is, it's, like I said at the beginning, it's a very creative way, huge private investment. It's now public dollars helping, assisting, and it's targeted. And all of the wherethes and then I, you look at the sections, that gives you an idea, not scheming, but all of the different stakeholders on the public side to assist the, the private development. That's why we're reading all of this. And like you said, you'll read it and it's like, but it'll be, they'll take care of it and then it'll come back to us and then we'll have an opportunity to vote again.
I should have used Plan.
There it is, yeah.
Plan would have been the right one.
Yeah. His left pinky finger more than me, but it's, the point is, I knew he was going to say these things, all of these different stakeholders. And then you mentioned Lake City Bank. This is, this is transparent, open, it's a very, very good thing. I don't even want to use the word risk, so it's, it's a good, as a layman on this side of the table, if that's, I just want to make sure you are nodding your head, Randy.
No, absolutely. For the bank to participate, they're, you know, they're, they're looking at it and altruistically they're doing it for the benefit of the community, but they are a bank and, and, you know, they are earning an interest rate. And so certainly they would have examined the risk of payment, non-payment, et cetera, and they're willing to go forward, so.
All right.
I also like the process just because when you involve this many entities, there's a lot of checks and balances. So lots of eyes are on this, lots of different, with different functions and looking at different aspects of it so that when it comes together as a whole, you know that it's been examined and examined well by many different participants. And I think that's important too, as we look to the public's trust to make this kind of decision.
I, I guess I would add too, and Andy can speak to this as well and Jeremy knows, this, the, the concept of TIF is the most powerful economic development tool that local communities have. And there's always attempts to restrict the use of it and God forbid should they do that because you, you wouldn't have the economic development tool. You would always have to look downstate for support for the smallest of projects. And this is, this is a, a choice that you as a local community can make from a local decision standpoint, whether or not you want to bring or entice a developer to come to the community and do the work they're doing.
So the good news the state got in the TIF game this year, so they, they certainly understand how critical and important this type of, of collaboration is. So, so bottom line is you all have one more crack at this after the EDC has the public hearing and everything comes together.
Yep.
All right. Final questions?
No, I want to thank you, Mayor, and I also want to thank Jeremy, the reason why we have him. As I rambled, okay, before, during, and after, their leadership on the public side has assisted us. I didn't see this 20 years ago. And I still have a hard time understanding it, but thank goodness we have private investment, we have all of these individuals assisting us to grow the city. And it goes back to the mayor and Jeremy's leadership through all this, the, the process on the ground that I, I really thank. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I would just say my final comment is we all know how retail is changing and how quickly it's changing. And we've got an opportunity to maintain some brick and mortar in this community, which is, I know what our citizens want. So this just, to me, presented an opportunity to, to take the blight with a very creative way to make this happen. And hopefully by the end of the year, you may be able to do a little Christmas shopping out there. So, all right. Any final thoughts before we entertain Resolution 2022-0403? All right.
I would make a motion that we approve 2022-0403.
All right, thanks, Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Josh. Final questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2022-0403 passes. Six to zero. Now we'll move on to item number eight, which is ordinance 2022-0502. And you've heard this is the first reading. Tomorrow at the EDC will be the, the public hearing, hearing, and then I assume at the next council meeting, we'll, I'll have the final, second reading or third, however you want to look at it, for you all to, to finally make this happen. So again, any final comments or questions on the bond ordinance, the how it's structured?
I just have a quick question, Randy. Normally we see a schedule of years and payments and stuff. Will that, will we ever see that or is that not necessary because of the nature of this kind of bond?
It is, ultimately it will appear in the trust indenture, actually in the exhibit to the development agreement. Exhibit A is the Baker Tilly report that Andy Mauser prepared. And so the amortization schedule for the 1,711 is actually included in there. But ultimately, when we get to closing, that final schedule will appear in the trust indenture that you're approving the form of. So you're approving the parameters in the ordinance, you're approving in the development agreement the expected amortization schedule, and then finally when we close, presumably the same amortization schedule will actually be in the trust indenture itself.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's 33 pages deep.
Yeah, I know, they're all, they're really long, but I just get used to seeing that little schedule and knowing.
It's deep in the agreement.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeremy.
All right. Any other questions before we entertain ordinance 2022-0502?
All right.
I move to approve ordinance 2022-0502 on first reading.
I'll second.
All right. Again, any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pass six to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your commitment to the community. We're looking forward to some work out there and, and things to start happening.
Started today.
Started today.
If you want to stay till the weekend, we have a little bit better weather coming.
I think we scared them off.
Well, they think this is cold.
All right. Any other matters that may come for the council?
Oh, just, I may update the council a little bit on the transition of the WCCD to Main Street, Warsaw, and also they're going to be handling the First Fridays this year. So Lauren and Scott Wiley and myself took some time, a week ago Monday, we went and visited as many businesses as we could cover in two or three hours. We had a little survey that we gave to each business, asking them, you know, their thoughts about First Friday, if they weren't participating, you know, what would prompt them to do so. We had a new flyer, a new brochure, and I apologize for not bringing that to you. And we also distributed a list of First Friday events for the whole year. And I will provide one of those to you, Mayor, that maybe we can put in the, out, out in the hallway there. And so it was really, really a great chance for us to get out and talk to the merchants and kind of hear some of their thoughts and ideas. And we still have a few more visits to make and we'll try to get those accomplished quickly, but I think we're on a good path right now.
All right. And first, the first First Fridays coming up?
May 6th, yes.
I'd just also like to remind residents that this is Earth Day week and so the street department has a, a number of different offerings, including that you can put loose leaf yard waste out this week during, on your regular trash day and then that can be picked up. So that's one more opportunity, if you didn't get it all cleaned up in the fall, that you can get it out this spring before we get started. Reminder that you can go get free public lawn bags, yard waste bags at the city street department, public works department, and you can get five of those a month. So you do not have to go out to Menards and Lowe's in order to buy those. You can just swing by and pick them up and I use them and they're very high quality. So you don't have to worry about them breaking on them, on you at all. And then we have our wood chip giveaway going on this week, anytime between 7:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Out again, next to the public works department where you can pick up free wood chips from everything that we picked up in the fall. So just a reminder that those things are going on this week.
Yeah, and the schedule, I know Stacy's been running on social media, on the city website, so if there, and there's other things, there's, I know Waste Management has got a, a big place for us to drop big items if, if you so desire. So yeah, a lot going on. So thanks, Diane, I appreciate that. That's all this week. And I do know that they would like the residents to pick their year supply bags up this week and want to try and get them all distributed, so. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to remind the council, we've been asked this year to help Dustin and the street department as far as input with some of the sidewalks. If you see some that you think merit more attention than others, please get us the list by this Friday. Dustin's got to be getting that in, you know, get things lined up here pretty soon. So if you haven't put something in yet, please do so quickly.
All right. Randy and Andy, thank you so much for coming down. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your expertise and guiding us through the, the waters of, of these bonds. It's, it's a little bit confusing at times, but we don't do them often enough to be experts like you are, so thank you very much.
So Mayor, I have one last thing.
Yes, sir.
So I voted today.
Okay.
At the Justice Building. It was really easy and I know with the voting centers and stuff, people might be concerned about it, but those ladies were so nice. If you get a chance to go vote early, they'd like to see you and couldn't have been simpler and no line. So I wanted to share that with everybody if they're thinking about voting in the primary this year, that it's easy to go do.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any final comments?
Gentlemen, thank you for your belief in our town. It's appreciated.
All right.
Guess he's ready to go.
I believe we need a motion to adjourn for some move. Thank you.
I was going to ask, Jeremy.
No, he probably got the trash.
No, he's been going through the trash.
Wednesday.
Is he all right?
Twenty.
Yeah, he'll be all right.
Wednesday.
All right. I thought it was Thursday for some reason.
All right. Hey, thank you very much. All right. Look forward to, yeah, a couple more meetings.
I have it in my calendar.
Push the button. No, we got it. For sure. Audio.
I have to pick up later.